Welcome to the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The community college board address these meetings. Hopefully, everybody remembers Valentine's Day. All right. We'll start with one point O, approval of minutes which were sent out in advance for the January twenty sixteen. Oh. Thank you. Did you hear that, Diane? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? All right, moving on to two point one, Barbara.
Well, up and up, not on Valentine's Day, all action items were approved.
Nice. All right, so then I'm going to. Uh, three point O.
We gotta do, I think, three point six, Michael said, right? It just means the whole group has to do.
This place.
That's under action items.
If under action items, it's under action item.
Oh, okay.
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 Four point one. Now it's four point one.
It's four point one, okay.
I'll move it.
We're moving three point, three point one, three point two, three point three, three point four. Thank you, Anthony, second.
I'll second.
Jason, second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Anyone abstained? I have to remember Jim is on there and it's delayed. I didn't cut you off. All right, moving on to action items under four point O, four point one. Recommend approval of SUNY Brooms' six-year proposed capital improvement plan twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. I'm moving it. Thank you, Margaret, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Barbara, any discussion?
Michael, was that discussed at the county?
Um, so if, if, uh, if we could, I'd like to just give a brief overview, given the significant, uh, magnitude of the request. So just as an overview, the total amount of requests in the two thousand twenty-four column, which is really the, the most critical, uh, both, both the county and SUNY will require us to submit a six-year capital plan. But, uh, as you probably know, the county basically makes decisions just in the, in the next fiscal year for them, which would be on a calendar year twenty twenty-four. So, uh, if you just take a look at that column, uh, you know, the total request of, of those projects is about thirteen and a half million, uh, of which, uh, eleven point five million are really three major academic projects, which I'll defer to Dr. Kelly in a couple of minutes, just to give a brief overview about those three major projects. In addition, uh, the thirteen, thirteen point five million, fifty percent of which we get, uh, SUNY, New York State reimbursement. So that's about six point, almost six point eight million. The local side, the other fifty percent, the match, uh, and these numbers are at the bottom of, of the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. About, uh, four, four point eight million is what we're going to ask the county for. And about two million is what, what we classify as other, which is any other match, which predominantly is, uh, usually what we call private money, foundation money can either be, uh, uh, the college foundation or, uh, all, all, all foundation funding goes through, uh, BCC Foundation. So, um, uh, so there's some, uh, some funding there, uh, especially for the, um, for the Decker, uh, dental and, um, and radiology, uh, programs that we're proposing uh, this year, as well as some federal match, that's, a federal match is also eligible uh, as match for the SUNY, uh, funding. Uh, so we have some FEMA money that we're, we'll, we anticipate receiving for COVID uh, related expenses, especially testing, uh, costs, which were pretty substantial. And, um, uh, Perkins money is also, uh, eligible match. So, uh, we have some of that applied to the projects. So without further ado, uh, Dr. Kelly is just going to identify three major projects uh, that totals about eighty-five percent of this thirteen point five million. Uh, significant IT classroom upgrades, uh, um, a major initiative around, uh, library and, um, and further, uh, Decker, uh, investments, not only with nursing, but, um, uh, dental and radiology.
So I, I've been really pushing pretty hard to make sure that our classrooms get updated. I think it's really, really critical at this point. You know, if we want to remain competitive to get the classrooms technology upgraded across the entire campus. So what I've asked for this particular year is at least fifteen classrooms. Um, and they're, they're pretty pricey, but that's really getting technology in the classroom for the faculty to use so that people are coming in and, and it's really a competitive environment, which I think will help us in terms of our recruitment. Um, and certainly, you know, as we try to increase our BAP students as well, but all of our students, we really want to be up to date and competitive in the classroom. So that'll address some of our STEM areas, teacher education, we'll be visiting Windsor very soon to look at your classroom. Um, and, and a lot of those classrooms. And then in addition, as Michael mentioned, the library is really significant in order to remain competitive. It's kind of the hub of all the academic activity. And again, a lot of our students, obviously our commuter students, so in between classes, it's an ideal place to go. Not just to, not that that's a bad thing, but not just to go get books or anything, but all kinds of technology and maker spaces and, and places where they can really, really get into the technology. So that was a, a big ask this year. And then, of course, the, as you know, the nursing project, we're continuing to build and expand. But in addition, our dental program, which is very, very competitive. And if you walked in there, it looks beautiful, but really is getting outdated. The, the dental chairs are outdated, they're not really up with the current technology. Um, so we're requesting to replace a lot of them. And then our rad tech program, which is also really popular, just the, the equipment doesn't last forever. And we've got one, one piece that's very, very outdated and, and will probably fail very soon. So that's a pretty significant cost as well. So all just trying to keep us in the competitive realm and, and really build on what we have already, but update everything to where it should be. And not everything, just gradually getting there, we'll add more next year for sure, but.
If anybody has any questions, otherwise, um, that concludes, uh, uh, an overview on the capital improvement plan.
Michael, is the other funds, are they from the, are they money or the federal government? On, on the two thousand twenty-four budget, the one point nine five million, is that through the federal funds? Is that through?
So there's, there's three pieces, uh, uh, a significant portion of that, probably, probably about a million and a half is going to, um, be, uh, an ask to a number of foundations for the Decker expansion, dental and, uh, radiology. We've, uh, you know, the county's very invested in the health science area. So we, we have anticipated a request of about five hundred thousand. And, um, the, the other primary area where we're using match is, uh, Perkins funding, uh, about a hundred and fifty thousand each year for three years, which equals four hundred and fifty thousand, which is the fifty percent match for the IT upgrades, that total nine hundred thousand. So those are really the two, two areas that we're using other, uh, match besides the county funding.
Thank you.
And just a comment to, to, uh, go with the idea, we've got to certainly have, our classrooms have to be uh, up, up to date and we can't expect to have students leave high schools and then have less technology and have worse facilities to, to learn in and then to transfer to a four-year institution that has great facilities too. So I think that, that, uh, is a, a great priority to have for sure. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, there's a motion in the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone abstained? All right, uh, moving on to four point two, recommend approval of revised AA four zero zero eight admissions policy. With a motion?
Um, huh? Maybe you didn't have this one up enough.
No.
No, that, no.
This one we have to review.
Um.
Margaret's moving it second. Second.
All right.
Second. Any, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, aye? Anyone object? Anyone abstained? All right, moving on to the information items under section five, Dr. Drum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, everybody, for your, for leaving college forward, we appreciate it. Uh, I had the honor today at noon of, uh, reproducing the commissioner of transportation, uh, to speak on the governor's executive budget. What a resume she's got. Wow.
Nice.
Yeah. He, uh, did a great job down at the, uh, down at the CEC. Good, good turnout for them. Uh, I attended the Dickson Town Hall on Monday night to answer questions primarily about the, about the land purchase. Uh, their biggest concerns are, are not even weak and do anything about at the moment. And that is that, I guess, the neighborhood has flooded, you know, more than once. And of course, that, that being historic and they're concerned about the, you know, the logging that's going on there um, that would add to it. The, uh, logging company, uh, has stated that they use sustainable forest uh, techniques to, to their pruning. Uh, so, uh, then it's, that's what we know at the, at the time. And, and of course, they don't want the land, you know, developed. No surprise, surprise there, they'd like it to stay in its natural state in, in perpetuity. Uh, I did share that we don't have any plans for the, for the property, um, at the, at the current time. Uh, let's see, the, uh, the, the Broom Express at Binghamton High School. Boy, what an exciting opportunity that is, that's where we admit the entire senior class and where Windsor led the way several years ago. Uh, we've also done it with a deposit, did it virtually with, uh, with Johnson City during, uh, COVID. Not, not quite the same energy as being in an auditorium full of, uh, high school seniors and, and you're admitting them all at once. What a great, that, that's one of the most exciting and fun things I've ever done in my forty years of, in higher education. What a neat experience that was. A lot of great energy, uh, in the room and nobody seemed like they didn't want to be there. It was really neat experience.
It's a great school.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we were.
Yes, it is, Margaret, thank you very much.
Uh, the, um, I, I, I want to speak just a, a bit about the, um, the, the governor's executive budget. It's a little on the scary side for community colleges. It's not a surprise that the governor likes to scare us with that. Yeah, we were hoping the new governor wouldn't, wouldn't follow in the suit of history of past governors. But, um, the governor, which is always, well, almost always the case. Uh, different kind of flat funding, typically we would be recommended for flat funding per FTE. The last few years, we've been recommended for flat funding, period. Uh, but this one has a footnote, uh, for flat funding. Of course, they're in the lowest, that funding is based on what was the moment, in our history across the state for colleges. But better than going backwards when enrollment's going back. Although our enrollment is not this year. Uh, but also has a twenty percent holdback for SUNY. Who really knows what that might mean? Uh, there is also a footnote asking SUNY to study the four funding. You don't know what that means. Is it asking them to study a new funding formula? We've been asking them thirty years to look at a new funding formula, but it's, it's kind of vague. A little scary, both counts where it's, where it's kind of vague. Uh, of course, everybody is now advocating, will there state legislators, because that's usually where we fight for our budget is, is, is in legislature, and the legislators, the assembly and senate. Uh, if we're going to get anything additional, there is an innovation fund in there, which is, which is good. The, the, the new chancellor was, was speaking about that, it's in the, the governor's budget, seventy-five million, right? Or, yeah, innovation fund, that, that, that's a good thing. That'd be everybody, but still, that's a, it's a really good thing. A little twist on what was in there last year for sixty million, it's up to seventy-five, so not bad. Uh, but, uh, I immediately reached out to, uh, our state delegation to ask them to, you know, if they want to study our funding formula, please do, we've been asking them for years. These kind of shots across the bow are always, uh, scary. And we would love to have them take a strategic look at our, at our funding formula. And if there was time to prepare for whatever a new funding formula might be, we'll see where that goes. But when you have a chance with Joe or Donna or Leah, uh, encourage you to advocate for uh, at least for funding, not minus the twenty percent for SUNY to do whatever, because there really are no rules, I suppose, that it's SUNY would, would write the rules on how they would use that twenty percent across the board. For us, that's typically what happens on, on those circumstances. They probably work with the state budget office to do that. If it goes through, we'll see what the legislature does with that twenty percent holdback. Or whether they'll, we asked for the four plus four. There's been no accounting for inflation since the cuts of two thousand nine and ten. No accounting whatsoever for inflation or, uh, in, increased labor costs, uh, for twelve years now from, from state. Anything? Uh, so, we appreciate your, your support with our state legislators. Ellen and I spent a few days, uh, lobbying, speaking of legislation in, uh, in Washington for some, uh, important federal legislation we'd like to see moved through. How many people here, I don't see Laura, how many people here knew that Pell was taxable?
I heard that one.
Yeah. And guess who it falls to most often? To pay taxes on Pell. Community college students. Sad irony. Uh, we all learned that recently, and I have never had a response from federal legislators like the response I got when I brought it up to, uh, Senator Schumer's people and to Senator Gillibrand's, uh, people. And we, we did talk about it at large group with Congress from all in our. Uh, they were shocked, they didn't know. Uh, and they certainly didn't know, uh, that it hits community college students disproportionately, ironically, because our cost of attendance is so low. I'm a tax accountant, I'm not a tax attorney, and I, and it has to do with the tax laws and with Pell law was written. And I, I believe it was inadvertent, that it came out that way. Uh, but both, uh, Senator Schumer's office and Senator Gillibrand's office were quite surprised to, to learn that. Immediately, um, took notes, I've never had that kind of reaction, because usually they sort of sit there kind of deadpan and talk and say, thank you for coming, and then, and that's it, they, they were stunned, uh, to learn that. So we'll, we'll see where that goes, sixty-seven percent of our students are on Pell. Not including fast forward, uh, but.
That doesn't mean they all pay tax.
Doesn't, they don't all pay tax. Some do. Uh, they want, the big impact is they are not, they become ineligible for the opportunity tax credit. Again, because our, our cost of attendance is so low. We'll see where it goes, the fact that it's taxable at all is really kind of bizarre. But, and as I said, our two senators didn't even know it was, it was taxable, one staffer did. When he was asked the question. Uh, several other, um, changes were advocated for at the, uh, at the federal level. The, the, the big one, which would be terrific, is short-term Pell. So that more workforce certificates would be eligible for, uh, for Pell grants for, for federal financial aid for workforce. Workforce shortage in, in the nation right now, and particularly at the level that workforce certificates would serve, uh, would be a, would be a huge thing. There are others, uh, as well, I'll, I'll might choose to speak to them, but those were the two big ones. Uh, that I was asked to, to advocate for and, and got. But there's definitely interest in, uh, in both, at least on the, on the part of our senators. The other would be big, uh, infrastructure grants for, to support workers. Uh, legislation just sunsetted, uh, last year, would you like to see that legislation? Continue. We've been the recipient of some of that funding in partnership with other sister SUNY institutions, sister, you know, community college. And I think that concludes my report this evening, Madam Chair, unless there are any questions?
See, any question on the bond properties, so the contracts, they have the contract. Went out to them, so it's in process.
Yes.
Any other questions for Dr. Drum? Jim, are you okay? Can you hear everybody okay? All right, moving on to five point two, college assembly, Erin Marley.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Anne, that's associate first speaker on retention and the chair of college assembly. Uh, so since my last report here, which was the October meeting, um, a few of the activities that took place, we did our, uh, your votes matter as a bench sponsor, um, and the fall we focused on need to be that, on a campus community ownership, governing structure, uh, what that should look like, uh, with our members that on each of the bodies, uh, and then went over the survey that we sent out campus by, uh, to get feedback and then on what which campus members should sit on the body, uh, within the shared governance restructure, um, essentially college assembly endorsed a three-body structure. Um, so we are moving toward a, um, college senate, an academic faculty senate, and of course, student assembly, um, which is different than our, our four, four-body structure right now. Uh, service that lively discussion over the fall through assembly, um, regarding their involvement. More student involved on the congregation committee, um, that continues to be an ongoing conversation, um, among campus and a very, very brief discussion surfaced around the generative AI app, uh, and that was, um, quickly moved over to AI or of an academic issue. Um, voting results, again, we endorse the three-body structure. Uh, we also, college government endorsed, um, the faculty council of community colleges, passed a resolution. It's similar to what Dr. Drum is talking about, I'm committed legislation, making some effort for the community college base offered in state aid. So they were just looking for support, college assembly, so they endorsed that as well. And in terms of the restructure, uh, we are planning, the restructure workgroup is planning to, uh, submit recommendations to college assembly um, mid-April, um, we should sit on each body, which members should be voting versus non-voting, uh, what campus, um, committees should uh, structure, how they should report to shared governance, as well as frequency of those meetings and the. That's sort of the next plan for the restructure workgroup is to get all that information together and then put it towards CA, um, for CA to enforce. Next to the entire court, any question?
A lot of work. Trying to figure that out.
Yes, it is. It is, but it's also a good learning experience for everyone too, so it's going to be positive.
Well, we'll look forward to that report.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for you? All right, thank you. Uh, five point three, examine the appearance, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. And just to say that Erin really just does that in her spare time, because she spends a lot of time and does a great job working on retention at the college. So that's just her, her, her side hobby. Um, I'm going to pass out, this is our new strategic enrollment plan, and I'll talk about this in just a minute. Um, if, if Diana brought up, as Dr. Drum was talking about, the uh, acceptance at Binghamton High School, there's a nice photo of all of them, and they do look, fortunately, they look very excited with all of their acceptances. And last year, Jesse tells me that we had ninety-five students from Binghamton High School who applied. And this year, because the entire class was accepted, there's three hundred fifty students who have been accepted to SUNY Brooms. So we're really going to be working that and trying to provide all the support, trying to reach out to the parents and probably particularly to those students who aren't necessarily completely convinced that they are in fact college material. So really trying to let them know that they are welcome here and we can provide the necessary supports and that we know that they can do it. So we're really going to be working that group as well and partnering with, um, a lot of community partners to continue to work with those students. So looking forward to that, and the enrollment team did a great job. And I know that Jesse's tried for years and years and years to make this happen. So this is a big accomplishment for, to Jesse and his team. Um, my report is in, in your packet, but a couple of things I just wanted to point out is there's been an awful lot of outreach, and I think that's really great. And thanks to Kathy Williams, who also has supported our outreach with a. And thanks to Kathy Williams, who also has supported our outreach with Rotary this month. So last week, Dr. Anderson was there and talked about our liberal arts programs and our business programs and how we're reaching out to community, kind of highlighted particularly paramedic, but also talked a little bit about AI and the chat GPT and got some interesting conversation going. This week, Mike Stamens and his potential chef of the year, his chef of the year candidate did a great demonstration in in the cooking kitchen, the demonstration kitchen, and I think everybody there now wants to come. And he's probably going to have to add more non-credit classes because everyone was very excited. It was a really great job. Next week, Christine Marty Ochoa will be doing a presentation on our STEM programs. And as you know, you've heard from Christine, she's been doing a lot of outreach to the manufacturing organizations all over this county and beyond. So lots of things there. And then Dr. McLean will be talking about the health sciences. We're not exactly sure on the date because someone else had to take the twenty eighth, but she's going to be there, we think, in March. So great opportunity to reach out to the community and let them know what we're doing here. So we always talk about the sustainability report here. So this month, what I wanted to talk about was the strategic enrollment plan. So obviously, with the sustainability report, you see a lot of a lot of initiatives on the sustainability report, but one of the most important things, and I think that we're trying very hard on our end to control is not, well, we we know we also need to watch our costs, but also how can we increase revenue and bring more students in? So we've talked about it for years. And we got a group together sponsored by the executive team, myself, Michael Sullivan and Dr. Carol Ross Scott. And then Jessie Wells and Dr. Kim McLean were the co-chairs that led several groups. So if you look at the groups, and this is great because we we just really know that we've got you know, a declining high school population. So we know that obviously it's going to be a little bit more of a challenge to recruit students. So we want to focus on that. Also focus on retention and then also the adult market. So we have a lot of things that we have to concentrate on. So we got these groups together. The recruitment workgroup, you don't have to read my notes because it's hard to read up there. My recruitment workgroup was co-chaired by the Director of Admissions and Mike Stamets. And the good thing about this, there were a lot of faculty and staff members involved as well. So lots of lively discussion around what what can we do? And a lot of creativity, I think, took place in these groups. Sylvia Briga, Briga was on it, Danielle Britton, Kenny Lee, Robert Loft House, Dr. Megan McGinnis, Michelle McKay, Callis Nunes, Andrea Roma, John Roma, Lisa Straley, Susan Wellington, and Sandy Wright. And then on the retention workgroup, and these groups worked for almost a year. This was co-chaired by our Assistant Dean for Enrollment Services and Dr. Lee Heron. Team was made up of Stephanie Albitz, Dr. Jeff Anderson, Evan Bigum, Nicole Brooks, Melissa Glenn, Laura Hodel, Dr. Stephanie Monberg, Erin Maroli, Loretta Panichia, Brittany Richardson, Vanessa Rodriguez, Dr. Gio Scaringi, and Dr. Nick Wagner. And I think that's really important, just to show the number of people that were involved in this. So you will see the entire plan, and you're going to see the goals, you're going to see the strategies and the tactics. I'm not going to take you through every one of those, although I did that last week at a room zoom and went through everything, which was long, but I think everyone needed to hear it. But up here, I've done just a basic summary, listing the goals and strategies. And I mean, if you want to follow along, you can see the tactics that are there, but there's a lot of tactics. So Jessie and his team now have the project, along with Kim, who's helping in IE to add columns here, which will really be pulling people and saying, okay, here's what you're going to do, here's the timeline and and really setting the goals. So there's more to this report, which we'll continue to work on. But goal one is talking about increasing the overall new student full-time enrollment by two hundred fifty to thirty-four fifty-nine. And the individual strategies there, and again, there's lots of tactics that go along with these. But increase enrollment for new first-time full-time students. Make the college more accessible for the adult twenty-five-plus student to increase enrollment of this population. Increase conversion of dual enrollment, fast-forward students to degree-seeking students. Increase enrollment of rural students. Increase EOP student enrollment to expand program participation by underrepresented minority students. And increase nursing and STEM enrollments to meet workforce demands. And that's kind of, I mean, if you we're kind of putting this all together, but as you can see, a lot of the capital requests also are kind of really focusing on what we know we need to do to grow enrollment. So the nursing and STEM enrollments, we talked about the technology and the DECOR expansion. And then we've been spending a lot of time on the fast forward. We had a workgroup last year, and we have a new workgroup this year to really bring in more of those fast-forward students as well. Goal two, by twenty twenty-seven, increase institutional retention rate by five percent. So it's at least fifty-seven point five percent. And that deals with clarifying program pathways, which we've talked about quite a lot, and actually have some really good progress there. Removing barriers that prevent students from getting on a path to credential completion. We just spent a lot of time looking at that, and they're just barriers that we wouldn't even think of. But as you go through all the programs, there's just hidden barriers that we want to remove and make sure that we're helping student students get through the program. Bridge academics and student supports to create a cohesive student experience in order to keep students on the path. Enhance college practices to enrich and ensure student learning. To achieve equity in college completion, transfer and attainment of employment. Infuse diversity, equity, and inclusion practices into the academic and student experience. And reduce equity gaps in the number of credit hours earned for minority students by fifty percent. And we're going to do a session next week. Dr. Ross Scott's going to participate with me in looking at. And we're actually going to have a student panel talking about their experiencing experience and looking at ways that we can help to reduce those barriers. Goal three, by twenty twenty-five, improve the usage and applicability of credit for prior learning and alternative credentialing to strengthen ties between non-credit workforce and credit pathways. We've talked a lot about credit for prior learning. SUNY just finished their credit for prior learning update, and we're going to be modeling ours as well, which gives students credits for their experiences. Looking at culture shift in which work and life experience, in addition to academic experiences valued. Create clear curricular pathways to employment and opportunities for ongoing skills development through non-credit to credit partnerships. And we spent a lot of time in the last year really trying to develop those. And it's assess the impact and usage and applicability of CPL and alternative credentialing. And implement a data-driven process to track that because it's not, it sounds fairly easy, but working through our student information system, sometimes tracking that is a little bit challenging. So we've been working on figuring out a way to track that so that we can make sure that we're awarding the credit on time. Providing students with those short-term credentials as well. Goal four, through twenty twenty-seven, maintain headcount of student village residents at maximum capacity. Obviously, this is a huge goal, and this would help us significantly. We're looking at streamlining that application, the onboard to get enrollment process for housing students. Expanding the rural student residency and student village. We haven't really worked with that fifty to sixty-mile radius as much as we think we could in some of the schools that really are local but aren't local in terms of probably parents thinking that students are going to drive. So kind of trying to capture that. In fact, Mike Stamens helped us set up last week a group from Unitigo, which is his alma mater, and brought a hundred twenty students, I think, to campus to take a look at the campus. And then, of course, retaining housing students from semester to semester and and providing checkpoints and keeping up with those students and continuing to outreach to those students who are struggling. And goal five, by twenty twenty-four, reveal the new brand platform that demonstrates the college's relevance in the community and region. Utilizing data from the Economic Impact Study, look at the community needs and college impact on the community and the region. Implement a data-driven process to determine priority marketing campaigns in line with community and regional needs. Expand methods of communication to include marketing materials and outreach efforts that appeal to a diverse population. Enhance the intentionality of engagement with various student populations through the development of standardized, regularly scheduled, and targeted communications. And create a culture across the campus which demonstrates brand cohesiveness and with students central to its mission. And again, lots and lots of tactics that go along with that. And that's what we'll be doing over the next month is really reaching out to those groups, making those plans, setting timelines, and making sure that this continues. And this is really, we really believe this can help us in terms of that enrollment, even though we see it declining and the the local region. We think some of these tactics are really going to be able to hold on to that enrollment and grow that enrollment. That's really our plan. And you know, some of the items you see, you see the BAP on there as one item, but obviously, the BAP expansion is going to then turn into probably about five, six, or seven items and all individual tactics that we really need to do to grow that. And we've been having a lot of conversations about expanding that and looking at options when they don't get accepted to be used. So I think we're making a lot of progress. And I think next month, we'll be able to talk about our official pharmacy articulation that I just signed today. Dr. Drum is going to be signing probably tomorrow, just came across my desk desk. So lots of good things happening. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Yes.
I assume you have other columns here that aren't shown, but like, for example, under your goals and your strategy, you want to grow by twenty fifty. Have you made columns for each year, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, with the amount of people? And then each year you will visit, what's working and what's not, and revise it according?
Yeah, we will. Right now, we've gone through one-year plan, but we'll be adding and and making that for all all the three to four years.
Because I could look at this, and like, I look at increased enrollment under certain, I was going to ask Jason this question because he's more with his school district. But if we find out that this is exceeding your goal, would we revisit, like, Binghamton has the Blue Bus and look at where the students are coming from and try to build that into a budget?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We'll analyze every year. And then, I mean, it's 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 a plan, but it will change every year based on what we see that happens. So it'll be a a living document.
And this will link into the sustainability plan as a subframework. Because when we present the updated sustainability plan, of course, what data are we using to, especially on the enrollment side and the revenue side? You know, what basis are we making in order to assume that we're actually going to show in a couple of months to the board that enrollment is going to go up over the four, four to five-year sustainability horizon? So all of this is in a database that gives timeframes, quantifies it, and rolls up to the aggregate sustainability plan.
And we've already made some changes just based on what's been happening. So we've been analyzing that and and making changes as we go through that. But yeah, everything's tied together in a nice, neat package.
Dr. Kelly, I know I can't. Then I read this. There is a section here on the mobile.
Oh, the mobile van? Yes.
Is it, I didn't know we talked about that at one point, but I just can't remember. Does that also have sort of, does it showcase sort of what the experience is in some way for students who want to take it out to rural communities? And it's hard for people to maybe get here.
Yes, yes.
Gives them enough of a flavor for what?
Yes. And what we we originally, when we talked about the enrollment van, we were really excited about getting into some of the disadvantaged neighborhoods, which was the original. And then we realized we can go out to all of these rural areas, and the admissions team has all kinds of software, and we've got the, we'll have the computers in there where we can sit them down and take them through the experience and then also even through the application process, the financial aid process, and really a complete one stop that we could go to them and do.
Kathy, at the same point, I, which is under four, under goal one. But the part I don't understand, maybe we don't have any CC to possibly get them enrolled and do the onboarding through the mobile. But what if they don't have access to travel?
How do they get?
How do we get here? Or how do we offer remote? So that they can all go to a community center? Because this could be a game changer in addition to BAP. But it just doesn't seem like we're missing two sentences. I don't know.
Well, well, one of the things that we've done, and what we're going to do with some of some of the more disadvantaged neighborhoods is actually part of the purpose of this van is to physically go there and show them how they could actually even do an online course. Because just to say, oh, you can do an online course, it's going to be oftentimes, it sounds great, but they really need to see that. So we're actually doing a face-to-face plan to show them and demonstrate how they could do an online course and then provide that opportunity as well, as well as the high flex. So even if high flex where if they can't come every day, maybe it's three days a week. Maybe they want to come one day and they can do the rest either synchronously or actually fully asynchronously, and it's all the same course. So that provides them some of that flexibility if they don't have transportation. And then some of the other things that we've talked about, which we really want to ask for, potentially if there's some kind of transformation fund or something, is, you know, at least locally here, maybe looking at getting getting some kind of bus or something, or working with the public transit system to see if we can get more of a you know, something that works a little bit better for our students.
I'll get a bus pass automatically.
And there are buses that come up.
Yeah, yeah. Some of the concerns we've had, not terrible, but some of the concerns right now, the schedule, we could probably get them running a little bit more often. I think they stop a little bit early in the evening. And and so, you know, as we get more activity, but but I think we can work with them and talk, you know, hopefully talk to them. And if not, maybe we'll think about our own transportation at some point. But yeah. And yeah, but we know it's a potential problem for sure.
Yeah, the only other thought, I don't know whether they do it or not. I don't know if they have that scope that broad, but like, Rural Healthcare Network does a lot of transportation in to and from rural communities. And if you, their office over on Court Street, Upper Court Street, it's like a control controller walk in, and I mean, they literally have this big, you know, board, and you can watch that they've got drivers out, people up, where they're going, where they're coming from. So I don't know if they do that, but that might be interesting also to ask if there's any.
A lot of that was grant funded and
Yeah.
For them to.
Yeah, I don't think it's an area that the rural area, which is one that we really, I think, really expand on. But yeah, but yeah, you're right, transportation is could be a
Jason, one second, Tina hits.
I just imagine people with transportation issues are, you know, even if we're enrolling them, they're going to have Wi-Fi and laptop problems too, if they can't afford. I mean, I think you're dealing with someone that the alternative isn't necessarily a viable option for them either.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, when we had the, during the pandemic, we did have a lot of those concerns. I mean, we did loan laptops, but you're right, not everyone has the internet. We can have, I forget what you call them. Just, yes, yeah. But but one of the things I think that a problem with that is I think you have to have cell phone access. And honestly, this is a little embarrassing, but where I live, I don't have cell phone access, unless I have a booster. Oh, great.
Well, I do, I do, but that's, so we think about that as being both a poverty issue or even a remote issue. It's really just a geography issue. So we could go one mile from here in some very affluent areas where they don't have have a good signal. But right now, and it's actually through the FCC, Broom County is is part of it, we're trying to do that mapping of where there is you know, the the high-speed access. And it's it's sort of amazing when you look at the addresses and how inaccurate the data is that the FCC has about about who has the access.
Yeah, and I know, Jessie, we get very excited with this conversation because right before COVID, we we were looking, expanding into Oneonta, and they were very excited about it, and we were all set to do that and and even had a place. And then COVID hit, and a lot of things changed, and people are really pushing for that the asynchronous. But you're right about that, you know, that if they don't have Wi-Fi.
I was just going to say the same thing Tina said. If if travel is one issue and access to computers or, I just don't know, and this is a question you might not be answered, but like, you mean, in the case sixty percent of people that below from a demographic side, below poverty line, when we get to the rural communities, and you would know this more than of anybody here, what percentages would be below the poverty line? And how do we reach? And one of the things that we should tackle is how do we reach that with this plan?
So I think it it varies, of course, right? But but it's, you know, so rural poverty and urban poverty mirror one another, and there's certainly more intensity, especially the the more remote that you get. I think that there are opportunities, though, and and areas, and you take that whole region, Oneonta, the DCMO BOCs area, the ONC BOCs area, that are really not served by community college as well. And often there are community centers. And that's, I know, one of the things in your plan is to build those partnerships with community centers. So even you know, the satellite campuses and those things, I think, are are a great opportunity. Some of it is, you know, build it and they will come, some is not, right? So I think, you know, part of the poverty, and I think so I think, you know, part of the poverty, and I think that goes actually to some of the fast forward work is really trying to look at exposing kids that may not have otherwise thought of themselves even necessarily as being college bound to to have some success in in the high school level. And I think, you know, one of the strategies is looking at some of those areas that have not been served by any community college with with those opportunities and Oneonta areas, right? The Norwich area, there there are certainly some opportunities. So so I think all of those things together. Also somewhat surprising in terms of devices. I can only speak for K-12. Devices that weren't really a problem. That people have devices.
But they don't have Wi-Fi.
Not necessarily, right? But that would, again, interestingly, some some was about financial. More was that we found about geography.
Southern Fury brought in millions of dollars to try to expand rural broadening access that they're working on now. So hopefully that will catch you.
Off campus things in Tioga.
Are we offering Tioga classes?
We're working with Owego right now to work in their new center.
Which we had before COVID, right?
We did. We had the one in the, was it the chamber? The office building, yeah. And so we've been working flooded. Yeah, we're working with Owego High School right now, actually, to partner with them to be able to offer some of the evening things. Yeah. And and bring some of their students here too. Yeah.
All right. And then to student assembly update. Now.
I'm just going to go over some recent and we're trying to first, we have a new vice president affairs as well as academic affairs. They have elected some senators and some senators and executives. In recent business, I attended the College National Legislative Summit, as Dr. Drum has said. And it was a very nice, very positive informational experience experience for me. I met a lot of other student trustees all over the states. And I'm very, very proud of our shared governance system and the way that it works in our body and how we can represent the students. They have a lot of ideas that I bounced off of as well and things that I want to bring back to my own college student assembly. For instance, accessibility classrooms, mental health awareness and support, SNAP awareness and being able to make it more accessible to students because there are so many students out there who qualify for SNAP but don't have it, as we've realized. I want to also really quickly run down the legislative priorities that we were talking about. A big part of it was the Pell Grants, as Dr. Trump touched on it a little bit. Making Pell Grants tax free was a very big topic for us. That would benefit students a lot as well as increasing the actual Pell Grant itself. Or increase or being able to lower the eligibility requirements for students. So more students are able to be eligible for the Pell Grant. Funding for short term programs also very big point that we have. Because short term programs right now are one of the biggest motivators of our community and our workforce. For instance, in construction, technology, AI, truck driving, things like that. So going down the list, we have funding for also minority serving institutions, for instance, historically black colleges, historically Hispanic tribal colleges. They have been historically underrepresented, underfunded, and it was very important to fight for those. I also want to go over funding for CTE programs, W I O A. That is a little bit more included in here in my packet, which you can read it over. The next thing is the Dream Act, giving permanent legal status to undocumented youth, especially those with deferred action for childhood arrivals programs. Undocumented youth are currently, you know, poor, poor state. And there is some, they're definitely a community that needs to be represented, needs to be legalized and not just for the benefit of our individual community and their own life, but also just for all of US society. Really, we're going to go down to this nickel point of things. Reformation for students' aid, supporting policies that address the needs of students by providing greater access to basic needs. For instance, SNAP or Child Care Access Means Parents and School Act campus. Ensuring healthcare programs for low income individuals be accessible to community college students. Tax policy, as Dr. John mentioned, the Tax Free Pell Grant Act. Altering the American Opportunity Tax Credit. So awards are not actually subtracted from a student's eligible expense. Meaning they get more award, they get a better experience at college, they have they have less debt. Also making sure that they borrow kindly. A lot of students right now go into college without the experience or the understanding of loans and how they work and how interest works. And being able to have them educated on a process is incredibly important, as well as FAFSA. A lot of students right now, especially first generation students, do not fully understand FAFSA or how to apply to it. And that's a great big barrier with community college students and why we have so little students applying sometimes because there is that barrier with FAFSA. So being able to make that more accessible and going out into community and reaching them in that way is also very, very important. There's also the Farm Bill Rural Community College as well as SNAP access. That is not exactly touching us. It was basically making sure that rural community colleges are funded and that we are giving back to our farming community and farmers because really they're the backbone of our society if we think about it. And that in itself feeds into SNAP accessibility and how SNAP is funded and how much students can get. I think that concludes my report. Aside from in student assembly, we currently have a big cafe committee going on. We're figuring out how to provide for students with religious requirements such as halal meats. And I think that's out of my report. Do you have any questions?
It's a great report, Al.
Thank you.
It's a lot to
Yeah, yeah. I need to breathe.
I think it's interesting. You know, on childhood poverty mission that I serve around, I think what I always hear and all that is there's all these programs, but every single program has a different entry point and a different application. It's just, you make it so difficult for people to be successful, right? Like, there should be one central application they spurs out. Every time you hear that, you just think, maybe it has to be a simpler way. Right? To allow students to be successful and to feel like they have control of their own destiny, you know, instead of all these different barriers that are unintentionally put up, but nevertheless put up.
That's what's good about the the entire class being allowed to go to a school because they wouldn't even think of it some of the
But you don't have to apply. Margaret, it struck me when that picture went out. I love seeing that picture because I was trying to sort of envision what it looked like when when I was there. There will not be, I'm not saying what year that was out, but but my class was four hundred and fifty. We had four hundred and fifty students graduating in here. We packed the place, right? I mean, we had to graduate out of the arena because it was the only place that could hold us. And then to see it, like, I looked at it, I'm like, wait a minute, they're only in the center of the thing. Like, what is, right? I mean, it's very striking when you see that. And it puts it in context.
Wasn't it a one room though?
It's so wrong.
I did, but I wanted to pursue this.
Tina, kick him when you're ready. That's fine. A great reporter. Any questions or comments? All right. Now on to BCC Foundation Report, Kathy Williams.
Hi, everybody.
I gotta put some energy into tonight's report.
Okay, geez, I've just been there thinking, oh, okay, I don't have much to say. But actually, most of my report is in the packet. And you know, I tell you a few things about financially, how things are going, all that information is in here. There are a couple of highlights I'd like to make. And one, I I want to thank Dr. Heans or Dr. Kelly, I'm sorry. And our dean, associate dean Mike, for agreeing to come to my Rotary Club, which also is Dr. Drum's Rotary Club, which is hosted at the C E C every Tuesday afternoon at noon. And I am so proud of what we have to offer as a package. And every single time somebody comes and not to put you on the spot for next week, but really just to be able to showcase that people you would think in our community or club members should know better is that they don't know what goes on here. So the whole thing about outreach and taking things out into the community is really how we have to do it and we have to keep doing it. So I wanted to thank you for that. I did want to just touch on a couple of things. You know, financially, as of December thirty first, and we always have a two month lag because we don't close our books till the end of the month. Our total investment portfolio was thirty eight point seven million dollars, of which thirty six point seven million is endowed. And our total assets were forty three point six million, including the beneficial interest in perpetual trust. Compared to the fiscal year end of June thirty, twenty twenty two, and we had total assets of forty three point four million. A lot of that is due to the market volatility of our invested funds. We did have a net surplus year to date through December of six hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that was primarily because we got a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar state gift. So we did still have unrealized loss, but it wasn't as bad as it could have been because we got that. But the good news is, is that how we support the college is not based on how our financial investments do. It's based on long term planning and we spend a portion of our endowment and we do a long term kind of approach. So we're really happy about our task. Other things, we have our newest magazine is in design and close to being edited and underway. We'll be mailing by April first. We're using a brand new printer. It was a time around, so we're excited about that. But we need a little extra time on the front side to make sure we get that ready. And then household by the first week of April. We, I always try and pitch our alumni events because we do invite our faculty and staff from campus and we get a lot of participation. And the cool thing is, is that our alumni can be meeting with our faculty and staff, many of whom they know from the time when they were students here. So it's just a rather nice night. If you'd like to come, we're going to be at the Black Bears Hockey Game on Friday, February twenty fourth, and registration closes on Sunday. Scholarship application process is well underway. We are a hundred, about a hundred more applications completed at this point as compared to last year at this time. So the marketing that we're trying to do and we have so many of our faculty now that are contacting us and asking Amy, our scholarship coordinator, to come out to her class, their class. And so she goes out and she shows them how to fill out the application. And most of the students are surprised because the first thing they think is that they're not going to get a scholarship, you know, they're not good enough or you know, they're not needy enough or whatever. But what we try and do is share the message that we have enough for everybody and more. So we've been doing a lot more of that. We're pretty excited about. We have one new scholarship that I'm happy to tell you about, and that is has been put together by the Brum County Association of Towns and Villages. And the president is Mike Marinaccio, the Dickinson Supervisor. And that is the group of all of the leaders throughout Brum County. And they made a decision that what they wanted to do with some of the funds that they have is to support a SUNY Brum student. And so it's going to be for a student who would be majoring in either criminal justice or homeland security or emergency services programs, emergency management programs. So they're thinking ahead about making an investment to try and help meet the community's needs for which they serve their constituents. So we're excited about that. And then a couple of other things. Kathy, I think I got an answer for your single point of entry or part of it. And that is today we had a regular meeting. I am serving on the Pathways Financial Wellness Committee, of which some of the things that that Kelly was talking about have either we discussed them or we've suggested some of them. We've even gotten some private support to fund some of the initiatives. And one of them really has to do with and if we're not doing this and thinking about this and teaching the rest of the campus, and we were very lucky to get some generous gifts to help support some of these initiatives. So I think we're getting close to the whole concept of the financial wellness because, Al, I got to tell you, if we allow our students to continue to accrue debt and student loan to come to a community college, we're not doing our jobs. And I promise you that we are, we are working at it and we're doing the best that we can today, but tomorrow it's going to be even better. So our goal is to get that. We we have already created a proposed model. We're going to be bringing that proposal back to which is going to allow for us to address students, whether it's in the mobile van out in rural areas or in on campus. We have all these resources, but you know, any public institution suffers sometimes from being in a silo. Where we all have this, you know, significant charge. And I really think that what we can do, and there's donor money behind and we just were close to being there. So I just wanted to give you some hope that I think it's coming and also did want to say thank you to Al and her peers because we had a student philanthropy committee meeting yesterday. And this is a group of students that is working to, I mentioned it before, they raise money every year through a lot of different fundraising type of things. Bake sales and all kinds of things. But they're what they do with that money is they fund two scholarships for their peer students. Well, this year they're doing so well that they're, they already met their goal. So they're going to fund four scholarships. So we're just really excited that they're learning about philanthropy. They feel committed about it. And so and one of them is going to be presenting a check to Dr. Drum at graduation of the money that they raised this year. So that's my good news.
It's all great report. Thank you. Any questions or comments we can? Great report. Thank you. All right, Dave Monakis. Facilities update, five point six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The list that I speak with every month seems to continue to get longer and longer. And that's thanks to to Dr. Kelly and to Michael Sullivan and to and to who else, to Dr. McLean and others. But I mean, it's certainly a testament to the efforts that are ongoing to improve the the college as a whole in its entirety and present as much of an opportunity to students that we can. So I'll be as quick as I can. Okay, I I'm in a really good mood today for another reason. I mean, Christine knows why, and I'm going to tell you, but let me, let me go through this. So today we held the kickoff meeting, which was very important for the Decker Nursing Renovation Project. And Dr. McLean was there, Dr. Kelly was there and others. And we were impressed with the both the architect that we have employed and the construction manager. We had a great conversation. There was a tour of the building after that, and we decided to meet every two weeks as a group to ensure that the project remains on cost, number one. But more importantly, on schedule, number two. Obviously, there's issues with materials and availability during construction. So that becomes problematic somewhat. But Dr. Ains, or I'm sorry, Dr. Kelly is is very supportive of the entire project and we've got a good group together. So that's, that's a good start for this project. Couple of other things, new scoreboard was installed at the baseball field with the dedication ceremony scheduled for April twenty ninth. We had a free bid walkthrough meeting of the restroom project that will be ongoing in both old science and student services. As Dr. Kelly alluded to in her presentation, we're putting RFPs together to secure architectural support for the reengineering of the library and also the construction of a student union in the old science building. We have a design contract being finalized to convert a portion of the loading dock, then a culinary event center into a chocolate production lab. We have architectural contracts. The chocolate? And in fact, they've already, they've already produced a lot of chocolate down there. And I know where it is in the kitchen. So I go somewhere whenever I'm down there. Where am I? Architectural contracts are being developed to to evaluate the Wales Building and its possible conversion to a one stop shop and also to look at the Little Theater and the renovation and upgrades of the Little Theater, which hasn't really seen any work for quite some time. And the intent there is to hopefully turn that into a a community or a college showpiece that can be used for other community events other than just music and 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 the like. I think I've spoken to the Uh, I think I've spoken to the design work ongoing for the Decker Waterford Chiller. Uh, we've talked about upgrades to the eighteen building. They've started with some, uh, lighting upgrades and some painting that's ongoing. But we will continue to tour the building with Christine and, um. And for, uh, move those improvements along. The concrete pad, I spoke to the fitness center, uh, or the fitness court that we're going to develop outside of the student center. That concrete pad will be poured within the next few weeks, uh, with that equipment being installed sometime in April. Uh, we continue to evaluate the development of a track and field facility along with an artificial turf baseball infield. Uh, we had our final meeting with the architect for the photo lab relocation in old science. Uh, we're working with Markham to finalize a contract to upgrade signing across campus, both stationary signing and new digital signing. Um, I think I spoke to this the last time. We're going to also get an architect on board to look at the student center building itself. And upgrade it so that it's more student athlete friendly and, uh. Um, and, and provides the support and the facilities needed for our student athletes. Uh, construction quotes are being obtained to begin work on the Human Resources Office, which will be over the Student Services Building. Uh, and then we'll follow up with construction work for payroll and finance as well. Um, our onsite energy managers live in Babu, who you've met, has filed his, uh, second quarterly report. And at some point, I think it would be beneficial for him to make a presentation, a brief presentation to the board to show you what he is doing. Uh, across campus to, uh, to improve our energy efficiency and our, uh, uh, dollar savings with respect to that. Uh, and two more things, um, for those of you who don't know, I mean, every, does everyone know that there's a movie being filmed in Binghamton? Stationed at home by Full Fledged Film Production. So about eighteen months ago, and Michael knows this, um. Uh, we were approached by the governor's office for the promotion picture and television development. And Baldwin Gym, our Baldwin Gym was, we submitted our application and qualified as a level one, uh, production facility for. The movies. So that production will be here tomorrow night from, uh, eight PM until eight AM. Using the Baldwin Gym to support development of that movie. And I think they may be even filming part of the movie in the Baldwin Gym. So that'll be ongoing. Um, and the last thing, and Christine knows this, so this being an educational group, I gotta, I gotta speak to this. This is all, this is almost as good as having a baby, but, um. So my son Connor, who's at Michigan studying, he's gonna get his doctorate in April in civil and mechanical engineering. And his girlfriend Lauren will get her doctorate in computer engineering and science. Uh, uh, and I'm gonna break up when I speak to this, I know, but they were both offered and accepted. Uh, positions, full-time teaching at Lafayette College. So they'll be starting. In June, uh, but, uh, yeah, pretty, pretty good stuff, you know, so. That's my report. I'll be happy to be, great question.
Very nice. What an ending to your, very nice.
I had to tell somebody. Yeah, I only have my wife on this. Nobody else can tell, you know, so I had to. Thank you very much.
Very nice. So back on the chocolate pyramid.
Michael will bring you some at the next board.
All right, Michael Sullivan, five point seven.
Okay, just a couple of brief, uh, brief updates. So, um, next month, uh, the board should expect, uh, Bonadillo to present the, um. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two audited financial statements. We expect the highest rating, no findings and a clean opinion. So, uh. We'll do that in, uh, March. That'll take care of last year. Uh, current year, um, monthly budget forecast is in your packet. Uh, it's, uh. Hasn't changed, uh, you know, we have pretty solid spring numbers, about flat for, uh, spring semester. Uh, so, uh, all the efforts around enrollment and retention seem to have stabilized the situation for the spring. Uh, so, uh, I think that bodes well for, uh, for next year's budget preparation. As well as, uh, tied to the sustainability plan in, in the, in the subsequent years. Um, but just a couple of other items, um. Uh, in your packet is, uh, SUNY Finance Office's, uh, analysis of, uh, the governor's. Uh, proposed budget, uh, just a couple of items that have already been discussed. Uh, a transformation fund of seventy-five million, a couple of projects that have been mentioned. It's probably easier to tell you which buildings were not doing a major capital project on campus, which is. Probably only the business building, although we're doing some roof improvements, um, Tichner and, um. Uh, natural science. So those are probably the only three buildings that were not doing a pretty substantial. How amount of, uh, of, amount of work. And, and two projects that, uh, David mentioned. That weren't included as part of the capital plan that you approved was, uh, that we're anticipating submitting as. Uh, uh, for the transformation fund, assuming the state, uh, state legislature approves the governor's proposal. Is a major, uh, upgrade to the theater, uh, to make it, uh, not only upgrade. It as a theater, but also as more of a multipurpose community center. As well as more flexibility on the academic side for larger classroom instruction, et cetera. So, um. And part of this is in coordination with the Binghamton University ongoing collaboration efforts. Especially related to BAP expansion. It's a real strong interest if there's gonna be. Uh, in the future, more, uh, BAP students actually living at the village. Um, uh, there's been a request to, to try to, um, improve some of the amenities that. That this campus has, not certainly, uh, comparable to Binghamton University. But try to upgrade some thing, some things so that the student union is, uh, was really, uh, pre. Of BAP discussions, but certainly, uh, kind of in sync with what you're saying to have, uh, really a one-stop. On the first floor, which is all the, all the, uh, health, counseling, mental health, uh, services. And then on the second floor, uh, pretty much a student union would be, uh, on the second floor. So we think that would enhance our, our current base of students, but would be another place for. For, uh, the residential, uh, the, the whole residential community to migrate to. Uh, library is certainly a critical aspect in the BU dynamics. And, um, and the other one that we're considering besides the playhouse, uh, theater. Multipurpose, uh, for transformation funds is, uh, really the athletic con- complex. Includes some pretty major upgrades to the physical, uh, ath- athletic center, locker rooms, a whole bunch of stuff. But, uh, athletic fields, um, this past year, we, we, we graded and grasped. Lot four, which is the, the big empty parking lot, pothole parking lot, uh, cross-loop road, right by the baseball area. So the, the dream is to, um. To, uh, uh, have a track, uh, turf track and within the turf to have a soccer. Turf field and potentially lacrosse. Um, so, uh, we've gotten some preliminary estimates on that. And that might be another initiative that we, uh, uh, submit for transformation funding. It's another thing we've. Another, uh, project that we've, uh, Carol's had preliminary discussions would be you on and, um. Uh, we understand that the transformation funds are to try to take a look at. New and unique collaborative initiatives within the SUNY higher education space. So those are two really big projects. Um, Dave also mentioned Wales, uh, you know, there's been a discussion since I've been here about a one-stop. For, again, going to your point about one place that a student can come and get all their services. Uh, notwithstanding COVID where we did it all remotely, but advising, financial aid, admissions, enrollment management. Uh, and probably missing four or five other functional areas would all, uh, minimally have staffing. Uh, with a reconfigured Wales, um, to have a student just go one place rather than five different buildings on campus. So, so that's in, uh, kind of this centralized, whether it's student union, health services. Um, or, uh, onboarding students, uh, at that experience, uh, we're trying to, trying to get that. Get those areas all in one place. So transformation funds should be, um. Uh, hopefully a good opportunity to do a couple of other projects that weren't included in, in the CIP. The only other thing I would just want to mention in, in your packet is this twelve-page analysis. Well, on page eleven, just so you have an idea of timeline, page eleven are the capital projects you approved a year ago. Okay, so, uh, so just so you know, the ones you approved today, county will be asking for. Uh, our, uh, colleges' capital projects within the next couple of weeks. They review them all, uh, spring through the summer. Then those become part of the county executive's proposed operating budget and capital plan that gets presented in mid-September. Uh, Broom County Legislature reviews those during the fall, makes final approvals in November and December. And then they get included in the state budget and, um, and will wait till April. So these are all projects that were approved by the county, were approved by this board a year ago. And we'll wait until, um, on or about April first for those to get approved. So, you know, the, the, the timeline is pretty extensive, fifteen months. Uh, from, from inception here to, uh, to conclusion. And then, then you start the bidding process, you know, so, so cycle times are probably from. Board approval here of a capital plan is probably, you know, almost five years to get a project totally completed. So a lot of lead time, which is why I think with five, five and six-year. Capital plans, uh, it's important to get them into the queue because, uh, you just don't turn these projects around. Uh, overnight. Um, so those are the, uh, primary aspects. I think, uh, I anticipate, uh, we're gonna present the proposed next year's budget. We'll have the auditors come in, uh, for March. Uh, I think on the schedule, we'll present the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. In April, along with, uh, multi-year updated sustainability plan. Cause certainly one of the key years within the sustainability plan is next year's budget. And then that really drives assumptions for the, for the three or four years outside of the budget, uh, that we're gonna propose. Uh, and that concludes my report, unless there's any questions or.
I just have one, you just have a column or a, a line item for the fund balance. Where do we stand on fund balance? Can we put that back into your report? Or it has moved?
Uh, yes, I, I could. Uh, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll tell you that, um. So federal stimulus funds, um, budget forecast three point eight million for the current year. That leaves about two point nine million remaining. Uh, so, uh. Uh, having some, some insider information on the proposed budget for next year. Uh, don't anticipate we'll use all two point nine million. So I think we're making really good progress from a three point eight. I'm gonna ballpark maybe two and a half million for next year, give or take. And, um, so we'll have maybe up to a half a million if all the numbers are accurate, uh, prospectively. In addition, we have unrestricted fund balance, independent of stimulus funds, currently at about five point eight million. Which is about, uh, twelve percent of the budget. So I think we're in, you know, we're very good financial, uh, position. The last time we were rated by the state around a number of criteria, we were in the green, have green, yellow and red. So, um, don't expect that to change. So, uh, we are, you know, we wanna have a sustainable budget. And I think stimulus money bought us time to develop and, 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 and implement. Enrollment retention initiatives, uh, some modest cost containment initiatives will also be included. Uh, in the sustainability plan to get, and I think we'll still have sufficient fun, fun balance and reserves. Uh, who knows what, what will happen in the future, but I think, um. Feel pretty confident that you'll be pretty, pretty pleased with what, what is presented in, in April for the future of the college.
Thank you. I know when we, about four or five years ago, we were down around the five percent. The goal was to be above ten. So the fact that you're at twelve, that's great.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right. All right, five point eight, that can candidates for term appointment.
Standard contractual.
And then we have five point nine, we need a report, Chelsea?
Um, standard report is what, there's a bunch of them there about.
Thanks. That one, that one room schoolhouse. That's it. Add it. Recording. All right, are there any other items to talk before? If not, I have this for an additional session or motion. Thank you. Any second, Tina. Thank you all in favor. Hi.
Hi, hi.
All right. So thank you, everyone. Great reports tonight from everyone.